Good evening. Today is Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024, and the time is 7:00 P. M. My name is Brady Goldsmith. I am the Hearing Officer Designee at this hearing for the Montgomery County Department of Transportation for the replacement of the Dennis Avenue Bridge, number M-0194 over Sligo Creek Tributary or Wheaton Branch. Here with me this evening to conduct this public hearing are Mr. Daniel Sheridan, Chief of the Planning and Design Section for Montgomery County Department of Transportation, Division of Transportation Engineering, Mr. Brian Topley, Bridge Design Chief of DTE for MCDOT, Mr. Greg Wong, and the, and Project Manager for MCDOT. Mr. Sheridan will be providing the information and details. Thank you for joining us on this virtual platform. Although we have had quite a few public, virtual, virtual public hearings, we keep learning, so please bear with us if we encounter any technical difficulties tonight. Tonight's hearing is being held virtually and is being recorded. A link to the recording will be posted by 7:00 P. M. tomorrow on the project webpage under the Project Documents tab. A Spanish voiceover version of the recording will also be available in the same location by Wednesday, April 17th, 2024. The link to the project webpage is provided at the top of the chat on this virtual platform. Please note, your virtual camera is turned off by default this evening. This is to reduce the bandwidth of the meeting and maximize technical efficiency. We request that you please do not turn on your camera during this, during this hearing. For the same reason, your microphones have been muted. Once the testimony portion of the hearing begins, those who have signed up to testify will be called upon and unmuted when it is their turn to speak. If you have not signed up in advance to testify but wish to do so, please raise your hand by clicking the reactions at the bottom of your screen, then clicking Raise Hand. If you are joining us via telephone only, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad. Please wait until the testimony portion of this hearing to raise your hand. You may raise your hand at any time during the testimony portion of the hearing. We will call upon you to provide your oral testimony and unmute your microphone when it is your turn to speak. Written testimony and comments may also be submitted and, and considered with the same weight as oral testimony. Following the testimony portion of this hearing, we will hold a question and answer session if time allows. During that time, you may raise your hand to ask a question, or you are welcome to type your question in the chat box by clicking on the chat icon at the bottom of your screen. Tonight's hearing is being held pursuant to Section 49-53 of the Montgomery County Code. The purpose of a public hearing is to obtain resident testimony and comments regarding the potential project to assist in determining if that project is in the best interest of the public and whether or not it should be authorized for construction in its entirety or any portion thereof. This form allows you, allows you to provide testimony either in support or in opposition to the project. Testimony and comments received may influence the final design. Your testimony and comments should be focused entirely on the project, which is the topic of discussion. All interested persons are entitled to be heard at this hearing. However, the testimony portion of this hearing is not a form for dialogue, questions, answers, or cross-examination. Please direct your remarks to the specific project that is the subject of this hearing. If your comments stray into areas unrelated to the project, I will ask that you refocus your comments on the subject project. Following the conclusion of this public hearing, the record will remain open for four weeks to allow any person who was unable to attend this hearing an opportunity to have their comments included in the public record and be fully considered. The official closing date by which all written testimony and comments must be received is Wednesday, May 1st, 2024, at 7:00 P. M. Submissions should be emailed to greghong@greg.hong@mccombrycountymd.gov or provided by the online comment form at the following link, which is seen on your screen. Please be sure to provide your name and property address on your submission. Written submissions will be considered with the same weight as oral testimony. After the hearing is concluded and the record is officially closed, I, as the Hearing Officer, will review and weigh all the information submitted into the public record and make a recommendation to the Director of the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, Christopher Conklin, for his final decision as to whether the project has been shown to be in the best public interest and whether or not to authorize the project as proposed or any portions thereof. And now to discuss the replacement of Dennis Avenue Bridge, number M-0194 over Sligo Creek Tributary, I give you Daniel Sheridan.
Good evening, Mr. Goldsmith, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, I am Daniel Sheridan with Montgomery County Department of Transportation, Division of Transportation, Transportation Engineering. The subject of this evening's public hearing is to consider a proposal to perform the replacement of Dennis Avenue Bridge, number M-194 over Sligo Creek Tributary, the Wheaton Branch, and other associated work at the bridge approaches. For your convenience, we have posted a few downloadable displays that aid in the dis- visual description of this project on the project webpage. We will review them as I describe the project. Display A is a map showing the orientation of the project site. The red lines are Georgia Avenue, Dennis Avenue, and Inwood Avenue. The light blue line crossing Dennis Avenue is Wheaton Branch, a tributary to Sligo Creek. And the light blue area southeast of the bridge is the Wheaton Stormwater Management Pond. The pink circle indicates the location of the Dennis Avenue Bridge approximately 1,600 feet east of Georgia Avenue. Display B1 quickly reviews the existing Dennis Avenue to be, Bridge to be replaced. The existing single-span Bridge was constructed in 1961. It consists, consists of 15 pre-cast, pre-stressed concrete void slab beams supported by cast-in-place reinforced concrete cantilever abutments and wing walls on concrete piles. The bridge has a clear span of approximately 29 feet between the faces of the abutments. The 2023 biennial Bridge Inspection Report reveals that the pre-stressed concrete voided slab beams are in poor condition with spalls, cracks, and exposed reinforcement. The existing Dennis Avenue Bridge is in need of replacement to enhance the safety of the traveling public. As shown in Display B2, the existing bridge carries two 18-foot wide through lanes in both directions for a total clear roadway width of 36 feet. The bridge also carries a four-foot, eight, four-foot, eight-inch wide concrete sidewalk and a one-foot wide concrete barrier in both directions of travel for a total out-to-out bridge width of 47 feet, four inches. Display B3 shows a bird's eye view looking north to the existing bridge and Wheaton Branch. Bridge number M-194 carries Dennis Avenue traffic that runs in an east-west direction between Evans Parkway and Glen Haven Drive over the Wheaton Branch. The left portion of Display B4 shows FEMA's map of the existing 100-year floodplain in light blue along Wheaton Branch upstream and downstream of the Dennis Avenue Bridge. Wheaton Branch flows from the northwest to the bridge and then continues into the Wheaton Stormwater Management Pond southeast of the bridge. The floodplain encroaches residential properties on Glen Haven Drive, Elden Lane, Brandon Road, and Dennis Avenue. The right portion of the display lists two photographs during a 2000 and storm event. In the yellow rectangle of the upper photograph, the Dennis Avenue Bridge appears to be underwater. It is believed that the bridge opening acts as a bottleneck, limiting the flow of the Wheaton Branch during large storm events, and excess water has no place to go but to nearby streets and residential houses. Display C1 presents the elevation view when looking upstream of the proposed bridge over the Wheaton Branch. Proposed bridge opening consists of three pre-cast, bottomless culverts placed side by side and supported by cast-in-place reinforced concrete abutments and piers on steel H piles. The culverts will be skewed to optimize the natural direction of the Wheaton Branch as it flows beneath Dennis Avenue. Each culvert has a clear span of 24 feet measured perpendicular to the interior wall faces. The overall length of the bridge will be approximately 80 feet. Culverts one, two, and three have a clear rise of approximately six foot, six foot, six inches and five foot, six inches respectively. Culvert two, the middle culvert, spans the lowest portion of the Wheaton Branch crossing, allowing the stream flow for sunny days, also known as base flows. In case of large storm events, excessive flow can pass through the openings under the other two culverts, thus reducing the chance of flooding nearby strength, streets and residential houses. Display C2 represents the proposed bridge typical roadway section. The clear roadway width will match the existing clear roadway width at 36 feet and include two 12-foot through lanes with a six-foot wide shoulder in both directions. A seven-foot wide sidewalk on the south side and a 13-foot shared-use path on the north side will, will be provided with a one-foot, seven-inch wide parapet on both sides for a total out-to-out bridge width of 59 feet, two inches. A sister project, uh, called the Wheaton Branch Flood Mitigation by the Montgomery County Department of Environmental Protection will be constructed after the bridge replacement project. The sister project is proposed to enlarge Wheaton Branch upstream and downstream of Dennis Avenue Bridge, remove sediment in the Wheaton Stormwater Management Pond immediately downstream of the Dennis Avenue Bridge, and modify the relief structure of the Wheaton Stormwater Management Pond. The right portion of Display C3 represents, presents the proposed 100-year floodplain in, in blue as the result of the DOT's Bridge Replacement Project and the DEP's Department of Environmental Protections Flood Mitigation Project combined. The opening of the proposed Dennis Avenue Bridge is enlarged, the Wheaton Branch and Wheaton Stormwater Management Pond are improved, chances of flooding to nearby streets and residential houses are reduced. The floodplain footprint retreats from Glen Haven Drive, Elden Lane, Brandon Road, and Dennis Avenue to the Wheaton Branch under 100-year storm. Display C4 presents a bird's eye view looking north, render, rendering of the proposed bridge and enlarged Wheaton Branch after the completion of the project and the Department of Environment, Environmental Protection Sister Project. The project area is utility deaths. There are overhead power lines, telecommunication, cable, gas, fiber optics, and water and sewer mains that conflict with the bridge replacements. Topstone has relocated its electric poles and power line to the fir-, to the further upstream of the Wheaton Branch. Verizon Comcast, Washington Gas, and DFNI relocation will take place by utility owners prior to the construction of the bridge. Display C5 presents the relocation plan of the impacted WSSC water main and sewer line. The light blue line depicts the relocated 12-inch water main and the green line depicts the relocated eight-inch sewer line. Their relocation is part of the project and will take place prior to the demolition of the existing bridge. The bridge will be closed to traffic during construction before the existing bridge is demolished. Display D1 depicts the pedestrian bicycle detour route to maintain traffic during construction. The blue area, blue arrows in the map rep, represent the eastbound detour of the pedestrian and bicycle traffic from Evans Parkway to Glen Haven Drive. The red arrows represent the detour in the reverse direction. An eight-foot wide temporary pedestrian and bike shared-use path, including a temporary pedestrian bridge with the same width traversing the Wheaton Branch, will be provided for safe pedestrian and bicycle access and minimize impact to residential properties during the construction. Temporary concrete barriers are to be provided to prevent vehicle or traffic from entering the works zone. Proper temporary traffic detour signage will be installed in both directions along the detour route. Display D2 depicts the vehicle traffic detour route from the ma-, for the maintenance of traffic during the bridge demolition and construction. The black circle indicates the location of Dennis Avenue Bridge and the nearby orange line depicts the limits of the roadway closure, which is from the east of Evans Parkway to the west of Brandon Road. Georgia Avenue, also known as Maryland 97, Yersville Road, also known as Maryland 586, and University Boulevard, also known as Maryland 193, are used to redirect the traffic to Dennis Avenue, forming a detour loop. The blue arrows in the map represent the detour of the Dennis Avenue westbound traffic clockwise in the loop, and the red arrows represent the eastbound detour in the reverse direction, counter-clockwise in the loop. Likewise, proper temporary traffic detour signages will be installed for both directions along these detour routes. The bridge and roadway closure during the bridge demolition and construction is currently planned to begin after schools are closed for the 2025 summer break and is expected to continue be, beyond the summers, the school summer break until the bridge is re, reopened to traffic. As mentioned, detour vehicle traffic is planned to shorten construction duration and pedestrian bicycle access will be maintained with temporary pedestrian bridge and shared-use path. Montgomery County Department of Transportation and its contractor will closely coordinate with the police, fire and rescue, and public schools. The construction work hours will follow the county noise order. The project has minimal easements and right-of-way needs and does not require purchasing private property. It al-, it also has an erosion and cement control plan to reduce the impact of storm events that may occur during the construction period on the cleared and grubbed earth surface within and near the Wheaton Branch. In addition, MCDOT and its contractor will work with WSSC to minimize the service interruption during the relocation of water main and sewer, sewer line. The total project cost is estimated for $10,870,000, including bridge replacement, land acquisition, and utility relocation costs, including both water and sewer. The federal government share is $6,510,000. Montgomery County share is $4,006,000 and WSSC's share is $300,000 with, which covers 50% of the water main and sewer line relocation cost. The project's design began in April 20,000, 2018 and is expected to be completed in the summer of 2024. The construction is anticipated to take approximately 30 to 35 weeks, starting in the spring of 2025 and ending in the fall of 2025. Approximately eight to 10 weeks for the water main and sewer line replacement and approximately 22 to 25 weeks for the bridge replacement. The, the project cost, funding, and schedule are subject to change as the project progresses until it is complete. Pursuant to Section 49-52 of the Montgomery County Code, no properties are considered to be specially benefit by the proposed improvement. Therefore, no properties are expected to be assessed. Several exhibits are incorporated into the public record binder for your information consideration. The exhibits include: One, the approved fiscal year 2023 to 2028 and recommended fiscal year 25 to 30 project description form for the Capital Improvement Program, CIP number P-501701, Dennis Avenue Bridge, number M-194. Two, the design plans at the level of 90% completion with the latest revisions. Three, the 2023 biennial Bridge Inspection Report. Four, Washington Times newspaper, online advertisement proof, and Montgomery County Government, governmental press release. Five, written testimony provided prior to and after this public hearing. Six, list of attendees to be added following the hearing. Seven, a hearing transcript is also to be added following the hearing. Project-related data and files can be downloaded from the project webpage listed below or listed on the, on screen. The files will remain available to the public until the record for this public hearing is officially closed. As previously stated, Mr. Brian Topley and Mr. Greg Wong of MCDOT are here, here with us this evening. In addition, we have Ms. Angela Stravig and Mr. Huang Li from the engineering consulting firm, Lehman Peterson Incorporated, and Mr. Michael Mercado from the engineering consulting firm, Mercado Consultants Incorporated. We will, oh, we will be available after the hearing to answer any questions regarding the construction of this project. Now I will turn things back over to Mr. Goldsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. We will now hear testimony from those in attendance who wish to testify. If you have not signed up to testify but would like to, please click on the reaction button at the bottom menu bar and click the Raise Hand icon to raise your hand. Alternatively, if you join the meeting by phone, you may dial star nine from your telephone keypad to let us know that you wish to testify. Once you are invited to speak, please clearly provide your name and address for the record before beginning your testimony. We will start with those who have already signed up to testify at this evening's hearing. Again, be sure, be sure to announce your name and property address before providing your testimony. Now we will go to testimony. So if I can get assistance and ensure that we get the individuals who would like to speak in order, I would appreciate that. Lori Ning, can you please announce the speakers?
Absolutely. Um, well, we had one speaker signed up, but I do not see that that person is here. Uh, and we don't have any raised hands currently, but there were a couple of questions that came in the comments received prior to the hearing, so we'll start with those. Oh, actually Jerome Charba has just raised his hand, so let's hear from him first. Jerome, can you unmute yourself?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Jerome, Jerome Charba. Uh, my address is 1906 Etna Place. And, uh, when I saw the flyer in, in the mail in March of concerning this public hearing, it caught me by, completely by surprise because I thought all the public hearings regarding both the DEP and the DOT, uh, you know, bit, bridge construction project, I thought those hearings were conducted over the past couple of years. So this took me by total surprise and I thought, in fact, based on the communications that I've had with, uh, DEP personnel, uh, that the construction would have already begun by now, at least in the, uh, the stream, uh, the stream bed upstream of the bridge. But then I, so I sent an email to, um, Liang, Lianghang, Liang, Ling, whatever. I sent an email and said, oh, they said, the response was is that the two projects are separate and the DOT project would need to be, you know, approved and completed before the DEP stream bed project could begin. So that's where, you know, so that, that all caught me by surprise because, you know, this really has put a big delay in the entire thing come, come, uh, when, when I, you know, when we were in discussion saying that, you know, the project would have already been completed by now. So was there anything that caused this to be, you know, you know, review, you know, redone again that, you know, has caused this delay? Am I, am I, am I all based on something here?
Uh, this is Greg Wong, uh, the Project Manager with Department of Transportation. Uh, concerning the delay of these two project is because that it took a long process for State Highway Administration to review and approve the design of the bridge replacement project. As this is a federal aid-funded project, uh, so we will have to review and approve by State Highway Administration. And since the process is long and delayed, and it's not, it's out of our control, and so that's why the project is, was delayed. And the previous, uh, public he, meeting, actually, you, what did you refer, was a public, a joint public meeting for these two project, and that was not a hearing. And this event today is the public hearing just for the bridge replacement project.
Okay, uh, can you still hear me? Can I ask another, a follow-up question?
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, concerning the, uh, the detour during the construction of the bridge, I wasn't clear on exactly where that detour was going to go. Uh, you know, I thought it, I saw Evans Parkway, I think I saw Grandin Drive, and you know, Etna Place is between those two, I'm on Etna Place. And so is all that ti-, uh, traffic gonna be, you know, funneled through Etna Place then? Uh, am I, am I still on, am I still on live? I'm not hearing any response.
Uh, this is Greg Wong with MCDOT again. Um, I would like to ask the engineering consultant, uh, Greenman Peterson Incorporated, to provide you more information about the detour.
The concern I have here is that, you know, Etna Place is a small street and, you know, it doesn't ha, it doesn't handle a lot of traffic. If that, the detour is gonna go through there, uh, that, that would be surprising that that street could handle that much traffic.
Uh, no, actually, uh, the detour will, if you can see the map on the screen right now, the detour will go through the Georgia Avenue and then university, the, University Boulevard and coming back to Dennis Avenue in this loop. And these are the lowways have a class Ireland or equal to the Dennis Avenue. And we have, uh, received approval from State Highway Administration District 3 to use the, uh, Georgia Avenue and also Versmeere Low as well and the University Boulevard, to be the route for the detour. So the traffic, these three selected, uh, lower should have the capacity to, capacity to handle the, the traffic during the detour.
Well, during the detour, you know, Dennis Avenue will not handle any traffic, correct?
Well, they, they will not be able to pass the, the, the bridge and the lowway as identified in the orange will not have a traffic to cross. But how, the, the remaining portion of Dennis, Dennis Avenue will be still open to the traffic.
Well, then that traffic has to detour around the bridge, correct?
No, the detour will be going either of cockerwise following the Georgia Avenue, University Boulevard, and coming back to Dennis Avenue. And for the co-, counter cockerwise, we're following the Georgia, uh, Dennis Avenue, University Boulevard, Versmeere Low, and Georgia Avenue, we're coming back to Dennis Avenue. But no traffic can cross the bridge.
So the traffic has to turn around when, when they meet the bridge?
Yes. But we will have a proper traffic detour signage installed along the entire detour route.
Okay, thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Okay, we have another, another, um, testimony from Elizabeth Brigham.
I think what is confusing is the, uh, map that you showed that was up and down, that showed Evans Parkway with arrows on it. So it's not this one, it's another one. This one, doesn't it show, no, that's, there was another one that was a close-up that showed Evans Parkway with arrows going across to Dennis Avenue. And it was going straight up and down.
Okay, this is Greg Wong again, and, uh, there's only two maps showing the detour. The one you are seeing now is the, the detour for the pedestrian and bicycle traffic.
I know, but this is not the, uh, screen, uh, diagram of, that showed, it's not this one, it's another one that says a close-up of Evans Drive. You just had it up there a while ago.
And let me go through each one of them to see which one you refer to. I can start from the beginning to show you all the slide. Uh, if you see any of them.
No, I did not see the repeat of the that, no. Not that, not that one, but the one that showed Evans Drive on it.
Show Evans Drive on it.
Wait, you're going so fast.
I'm sorry.
Dragging in goes slower so she can see which one it was.
It's not that one, it's not that one, it's not that one. It was straight up and down thing, not going across like that. It was a small, thin, skinny diagram. But it did show Evans Drive with some arrows going over to, um, maybe Glen Allen, I don't know where it was going. I think that was where it was confusing.
Uh, I don't see any map, I'm going through every map.
I know.
We have be showing and I don't see any map like what you have described it.
Okay, alright. So the the detour will be completely from Georgia Avenue up to university and down university back to Dennis to come back down to any of the houses and stuff that are on the other side of the bridge.
That's correct.
Okay. We can still go down Dennis Avenue to get to the street that goes over to the medical park buildings.
Why?
Okay. I think that's used more that than most anything right now.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Um, let's see, we have a couple of questions in the chat. Sean Randall, uh, of one zero three zero eight Inwood Avenue has asked, can you share the drawing of the effect the project will have on the floodplain downstream from the storm water management pond?
Is this what is referred?
So I think the question is, are there any maps that show effects downstream of the stormwater management pond?
Uh.
This this pro, this project does not have any, but perhaps the Department of Environmental Protection might, but in general, there'll there'll be no downstream effect from the stormwater management pond because the the outflow from the pond is controlled by the structure in the pond. But we can ask our colleagues at Department of Environmental Protection if they have any downstream maps to share. They're not available tonight, though.
Hello, this is Lo Yinzang, I'm actually, I'm from D E P. Um, I can share of the downstream floodplain map with you, Sean. Um, if you leave your contact information, I will reach out to you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I was the chance to send me an email and then I will forward that to Miss Jane for her to answer and and provide you the map.
That works.
And Lori, I got one, uh, I think one directly to me. Um, forgive me, forgive me if I'm pronouncing this wrong, Sebastian Shianzi. Um, is the work starting in spring twenty twenty five or after the school year ends in summer twenty twenty five? Or does the work start in the spring, but the bridge doesn't get closed until June? So that's correct, the the work starts in the spring of twenty twenty five, but the closure doesn't happen until after the school year is over in June, late June of twenty twenty five. The work will start that leads up to that, but it will not include a bridge closure until after the school year is over.
Okay, I have another question in the chat from Heather Lang. She, uh, she says, I live on Glenn, Glenn Haven Drive next to Eldon. Given that Glenn Haven Drive is one way and access will be closed from Dennis Avenue, will traffic be open both way, uh, will traffic be open to traffic both ways during construction so that we can enter from the other direction? Will it still be possible to park in front of our house as this street is primarily street parking?
Hello, this is Dan Sheridan, I think that's a question that we'll have to verify with our Division of Traffic Engineering and Operations. Uh, I don't know that anybody's here from that tonight, but uh, we can, we can review that question with them and get an answer back to you. And then as far as street parking, it should be allowed unless it's in the immediate uh, vicinity of the construct, you know, of the construction.
Okay, great, um, let's see. Can the map picture be enlarged? Terry Mihean would like us to enlarge the, which, I don't know which map.
From the map.
Uh, Brian Shaw at from one five one one Gridley Lane would like to know, do you have any information on the hearing for D E P's portion of the project? Is there a scenario where the bridge project proceeds, but D E P's project does not?
This is Lo Yinzang again from D E P, I can take that question. Um, the current schedule, you you know, um, after the bridge project is completed construction, then the flood mitigation, you know, which is the D E P project will come in. And right now it's under the permitting process, it's still, you know, uh, it it's still, uh, it will be constructed after the D O T project.
Yeah, I think another way to answer that is both projects are fully funded, so as soon as the permitting and design processes are complete, then construction can begin. And again, the the D O T project, bridge replacement will go first and then the D E P project will follow after.
That's correct.
But they're both fully funded.
Alright, uh, we have another question from Jerome Charba. Can you unmute Jerome?
Uh, you you stated that the, uh, the D E P flood mitigation project will follow the bridge construction project. And you said that the, uh, D E P project is in the permitting stage. Now, is there the possibility that permits will get delayed? That the project cannot immediately follow the bridge construction project?
Um, this is Lo Yinzang again, it is possible, as you know, um, we'll have to get fully permitted to be able to start the construction. Um, of course, you know, we'll try to avoid that if possible, but there's still uncertainties in there. Um, we we will need to get all the permits before we can start the construction.
So who who issues those permits? I mean, is that totally, you know, uh, other agencies that have to approve those permits?
Yeah, as you know, um, you know, specific to the flood mitigation ones, we have um, re- review agencies, including the Department of Permitting Services, D P S, W S S C for the sewer line and also M M D E for the waterway and construction. So there's multiple regulatory agencies that we'll need to work with.
You know, it's a little bit surprising that, you know, that permitting is taking so long because I was under the impression already, I was under the impression already that the permitting had started, you know, a year or two ago.
Yeah, uh, it is, but you you know, it's all, um, it's it's all in sequence and, um, for the construction sequence, if the D O T project, uh, is not complete, then this uh, D E P project cannot move forward. But in the meantime, you know, with the D O T project being finalized, then we can update our final design with the, uh, you know, the D O T, the final plans. That way we can resubmit to the review agencies for the approval.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Jerome. Uh, I have another question in the chat from Amy C. She would like to know whether, uh, if you have alerted M C P S specifically Sligo Middle School about the bus routes, uh, the detour and how will they be affected?
Uh, this is Greg Huang. We have contacted Department, uh, Montgomery County Public School and to inform them about the bridge closure and also the impact to the school bus operations. And the school bus is aware of this project and they were planned for the school bus detour.
Okay, we also have a question from Jamie at ten six hundred Inwood Avenue. Uh, won't most people end up using Inwood or Sligo Creek Parkway to bypass the bridge on the east side? Just wondering how much traffic to expect on my street.
This is Greg Huang. We would not be able to predict how much traffic that would like to use a cycle quick parkway for the detour. And all, uh, new wood avenues for their D detour. We can only do is provide a detour route uh, as what is shown on the plan to allow people to use. And so therefore we cannot predict a traffic, how much traffic that people will use uh, for other street within the, uh, area.
Okay, we have another question from Amy C. She asks, will the detour impact pedestrians, including students?
This is Greg Huang again. Uh, the detour route will certainly, uh, have some impact for the student who walk to the school, uh, and also the driving, uh, that go to the school by driving. Uh, it's definitely there were, uh, for the impact to the students walking to the school or bicycle to the school will be minimum because we have provided a, a temporary share use path and temporary bridge. Right, not, uh, right close to the, the bridge on the Dennis Avenue. But for the traffic, uh, go to the school by traffic will take a long detour route. If one depend on the where they live, so it's, but some people would be affected.
Okay, that is the last question that I have in the chat. Um, let's move from, let's move to the questions that were received in the comments. Hannah Pitt says, please use this opportunity to enhance pedestrian safety. Many kids and parents walk along Dennis Avenue. Uh, the middle school is just down the way. Dennis is more than wide enough to add bike lanes and widen the sidewalks. The speed limit is thirty miles per hour until you hit Sligo, where east of the creek is dropped to twenty five and there are lots of speed signs and warnings. Why do we not have that protection on the western side? I think that's a question for traffic. Um.
Uh, this is Greg Huang. And the requested protection safety improvement uh, along the Dennis Avenue, uh, actually is beyond the scope of the Dennis Avenue Bridge Replacement Project. However, it can be considered under the sidewalk program by the Department of Transportation. Uh, more information about the sidewalk program can be found in our sidewalk program website. Uh,
Yes.
I can ask Lori, uh, who is also the project, uh, the sidewalk program planning specialist to share with you the link for the website.
Yes, you will find the link to the sidewalk program website at the top of the chat, this evening's chat, right under the link to the Dennis Avenue Bridge website. Um, if if you scroll up and, um, you can go on our website and request sidewalk. And those those requests will have a field inspection scheduled and they will be prioritized based on safety and other pedestrian generators such as restaurants, schools, etc. So, so yes, you can absolutely request sidewalks. Um, okay. Our next question from Sarah Rhodes. I would like more information on efforts to preserve trees around the creek. We have lived on Glenn Haven for more than fifteen years and love our creek, its trees and the wildlife it attracts. I'd like to see effort put into preserving the trees. The rendering looks as though they will be erased and replaced with pebbles and grass.
Okay, hello, this is Greg Huang again, and we would like to have the engineering consultant firm Greenman Peterson's in cooperation to answer the part of, uh, to answer about the preserving the trees. Uh, so either Andrew or Huang, uh, either one of you can answer the question.
Sure, uh, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, this is Huang Li from with Greenman and Patterson, a consultant from their help county and to design the project. For this project and we would like to reply that the rendering uh, uh, focus more on the new bridge and a new roadway. And but it does not include a landscape feature of this project. A tree protection fence will be used to protect the trees at the age of the project site. For trees, they are removed due to the Dennis Avenue Bridge Replacement Project and the Wheaton Branch Flood Mitigation Project, the Caesar Project. New trees will be planted at the project site to compensate. The landscape and the tree saving plan will be reviewed and approved by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources and the Montgomery County Department of Permitting Service.
Alright, that's the last question I have.
Does anyone have any more questions? If not, thank you again to everyone who participated in the Q and A. Uh, based on the fact that we don't have any more questions, we will conclude this hearing at this time. Please note that you can email your questions to the project manager, Mr. Greg. time. Please note that you can email your questions to the project manager, Mr. Greg Huang, after the hearing. So seeing that all questions have been answered, we will now conclude this hearing. As a reminder, we will keep the record open for four weeks. Written testimony and comments are due by Wednesday, May first, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. Additional written testimony and comments may be submitted by email and must be received by the close of this hearing record. Submission should be sent to, uh, Mr. Greg Huang, uh, whose email address you see on the screen. Or it can be submitted online, uh, comment form at the following link, which is also seen on your screen in English and in Spanish. Certainly, we appreciate all of you participating, and thank you for your comments and questions. At this time, the public hearing is now concluded. Have a great evening, everyone.